We'll go ahead and get started. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting for May 13th, 2021. Let the record show that all three trustees are present. Also present is our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell. Gentlemen, the first item tonight is approval of minutes. You've been presented with the minutes from the April 8th, 2021 regular meeting. If there's no objections or changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, Mr. McGee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving right along, we also have the April 8th, 2021 zoning meeting minutes. If there's no objections or changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is correspondence. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything tonight?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those special presentations. We'll move right on to our department reports. The first report tonight is from our Fire and Emergency Medical Service Chief Stan Daimler.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of April, the department responded to 199 fire responses, 502 emergency medical responses. We made 402 transports of patients to local hospitals. The employees completed 2,110 hours of training, handled 17 public education details, and completed 88 fire safety inspections. And you'll note on the report that I also indicated that we had 20 hours of ride-along paramedic training time. And just to note about that, we have an arrangement with several of the paramedic programs in the region where we have preceptors on the fire department that train local paramedic students. So these could be EMTs or paramedics in training. The majority of the people that have been riding with us lately are actually air care nurses. And as you know, they're highly trained, advanced practitioners in critical care nurses, but they're required to get their paramedic certification as well. So they ride on our paramedic units, and that gives them the ability to get their paramedic certification and also teaches them a little bit about giving care in the pre-hospital arena as opposed to the sterile environment in the hospital. But as you can imagine, you know, we probably learn as much from them, if not more, than what they learn from us because they have the experience and years and years of advanced practice in the hospital setting. So if you see somebody riding with us and they might be wearing a different uniform than what you're seeing, that could be an air care nurse, a paramedic student. It may even be a resident or a doctor, even a medical director that's riding with us. So we do that on a regular basis. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief Daimler.
I did see some photographs of some of the training. Like, there was one instance of training, like, if a bus was turned on its side and getting rescues out of that. So pretty interesting to see some of the training through going through. I will move on to our police department. Tonight, we have Chief Scott Gaviglia reporting.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of April 2021, Communication Center handled approximately 3,500 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS. The records section processed 452 records requests. In Public Affairs, we finished up the annual robbery response plan with the local financial institutions, provided new businesses with placards that we use for our codes. We conducted several drive-by for birthday parties in the township. Administrative side of things, the staff cars came in from Beechmont Ford. The other ones are in order and expected delivery in a month or so. Development continues for the infrastructure, for the body cams. All the equipment's in or just migrating, all the computers that have to be in effect for those who operate and download and store correctly. We're still on target for the June implementation date. We'll be starting officers off in pods. We just don't turn 40 people loose at the same time and overwhelm our system. But you'll see everybody, hopefully by the middle of June, wearing them, and the process will be completed. And thank you for your support for that. It's been a, it's been long. It's been a big learning curve on our end trying to make everything work and match. But we're there. And, you know, there'll be some hiccups along the way, but we'll take them. On patrol side of things, we took 317 incident reports, investigated 115 crashes, conducted 502 traffic stops, issued 127 citations and 356 warnings, conducted 499 field interviews, made 127 criminal arrests, 89 traffic arrests, and we served 169 warrants. For the month of April, the K-9 unit seized 39 grams of marijuana, 15 and a half grams of heroin, 215 grams of methamphetamine, and 15 narcotic-type pills. Through April investigations, has closed 144 cases, conducted 92 hours of training for police department. Fuel cost was the $8,800 for 32,000 miles driven. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
Good news here about the body cams. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for support on this.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
And go ahead and mention right now that May 9th through the 15th is National Police Week. So we honor our police and your entire staff and your Communications Department, and thank you for all you guys do.
Amen.
Next is a report from our Service Department, Mr. Matt Taylor, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. From the Cemetery Division, from April 15th through the 30th, 13 burials were performed, generating $6,900. 10 resident graves were purchased, generating $5,500. And 14 foundation orders were purchased, generating $5,025.20. And one cremation scattering garden was purchased, generating $500. The total amount generated for the period was $17,925.20. And then the Roads Division, a total of 22 work orders were completed on 20 township roads. And Junk Days were held April 19th through the 24th. And then the Parks Division maintenance or staff was performed on all township baseball fields, and staff continues to mulch all township facilities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions, gentlemen?
Thank you for all the good, hard work that you and your men put up. This junk days, a lot of junk, wasn't it?
There were a lot of junk.
Yes, sir, there was. More than we've seen in a while.
Best comment someone's made was, "At what point will the township run out of garbage?" It doesn't happen yet, so every year it keeps coming.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. A lot of hard work. All right, we'll move on to our Planning and Zoning Department. Mr. Corey Wright, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of April, we completed 41 inspections, fielded 10 complaints, issued three warning citations, three 15-day non-compliance letters, and resolved six items administratively. We re-inspected 13 existing violations, and there were no nuisances filed for the month of April. We did have one new commercial permit, one change of use occupancy, eight signed permits, 13 single-family home permits, 36 pool and fence permits, and 14 accessory buildings for the month of April, $12,844 in monthly revenue. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gentlemen, any comments or questions for Mr. Wright?
Looks like, uh, single families moving up a little bit, starting to go forward.
Yes.
If the cost of lumber will drop down.
Well, just the prior year revenue versus the total year revenue for the month of April, 2,165 versus 12,844. So great to have rounded that corner. So, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. Next report is from our Administration, Mr. Ken Geis, Township Administrator.
Thank you. After the last meeting, I did talk to the representatives from ODOT about Barksaw Run Road, and I followed up with the representative, and that's in process. It'll probably take 60 to 90 days from this point forward, she indicated, before we'll get a notice from them about the transfer of the right-of-way. As that develops, I'll just keep you advised. The Copper Lane vacation, that was sent to the Clement County Commissioners, and as soon as they act upon that, I'll, and we get notice on that, I'll let you know as to how that's progressing. Sheriff Ax opened on April 12th, and again, they seem to be actively pursuing new customers, and they seem to be very happy. I think we've had some communication from Mr. Kramer from Sheriff Ax on that site. Our open checkbook is up to date on the online, and we are finalizing the roadway improvements on Round Bottom Road for Hamilton Safe. I really just want to take just a second to point out, you know, the coordination that we've had, you know, through, you know, all offices of the township, Mr. Wright, myself, and working with the sanitary line installation and all the work that went through that and the coordination with the TID, as well as the Duke Energy, the gas line that's going in there. It really has been a sort of a big process and a, you know, a project that a lot of places couldn't have handled. As you know, we had to shut down the eastern end of Round Bottom Road while we're completing this and reroute traffic. We had to manipulate the lane usage on Round Bottom Road because we were bored through Round Bottom Road to install the Duke gas line. We're gonna have to bore through some of the roadway as it relates to the sanitary line. So there's a significant amount of coordination that has gone on for this. And again, there's an awful lot of work that has gone on to that. And again, we're gonna start the roadway project, hopefully sometime, you know, later this summer, the end of July, August. We're gonna give that to the TID to ask them to bid and to manage that project. But that is moving forward. I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Stroud, the President of Hamilton Safe, and he couldn't have been more complimentary and appreciative of the efforts of Union Township and the support from the Board of Trustees. We did submit Brenda Vega for the Salute to Leaders for that, and as the Board knows, she's our official self-appointed swan lady. You know, she really has put in a lot of hours of volunteer work through the past couple of years, helping us with the swans, feeding them, caring for them, you know, doing a lot of work that, you know, she's not paid for. When she was incapacitated for a while, she actually had her daughter come here and help out. So again, as far as volunteers go, and somebody that is contributing to Union Township without asking for anything in return, you know, she certainly fits that bill in that regard. To date, I don't know of any final decision on the American Rescue Plan as it relates to townships, and that we hope that we are gonna fall into that non-entitlement group and that there will be a direct distribution to the state that will come to us. But as the Board knows, the townships in Ohio were effectively left off of that. Smaller communities, villages with as few as, you know, 1,000 people are getting tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on that, where, you know, Union Township with 50,000 people is not getting anything. If you look at some of the comparable cities to us with 50,000, you know, they're receiving upwards of $20 to $30 million in resources. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that squared away, and we will get a direct type of disbursement from the state of Ohio in the American Rescue Plan. Mr. Taylor reported, you know, Junk Days were, you know, highly successful. We used 40, 30 cubic yards of dumpsters and 12 packer trucks. And I just want to compliment Mr. Taylor in the use of the packer trucks that we started, you know, some time ago. A packer truck can hold, you know, upwards of three of the dumpsters in that. So we're able to keep them on site and to move those in and out throughout the week, and particularly on Saturday. Even with all of that, we were pretty overwhelmed on Saturday, but, you know, without that coordination, it would have been a disaster. But by Monday, you know, afternoon, everything was cleaned up and everything was packed away, and we were back in normal operation. We're still waiting the award notice on the Safer Grant, and the Safer Grant is for our staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for the fire department. We had applied for six positions in that. Hopefully, we will be successful in that. We've asked for those positions for up to three years, which means that we would receive full reimbursement for their salaries and the statutory overtime with that, for that period, which, you know, could be, you know, $130,000, $140,000 per position in that. So as soon as we get some notice on that, I'll certainly inform the Board. We're working with Jungle Gyms and Crossroads Church on our summer finale for the fireworks. Last year, we had to postpone that. Hopefully, this year, we'll be able to have that. Again, with us, you know, the governor lifting the mask mandate and all those things, I think it lends itself to more of a traditional setting. And the last time we had the fireworks, it was hugely successful in that. And I think that would be a great way to cap off, you know, this summer if we're able to do that. It was nice to see the Board President were there for Mr. Kelly's grand opening. I had an opportunity to talk to him and Lank. I've, you know, known him for, you know, 35 years. And he just wanted me to express, you know, to you publicly, you know, his appreciation of, you know, the Board of Trustees and their support, you know, our administrative staff, Corey in the zoning, and the expansion of his operation on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. You'll notice on the payment of the purchase orders this time that there's a lot of TIF payments in there and reimbursements, and those are all statutory payments that we have the make-whole agreements with the school districts or we have some other economic incentive agreement with a particular developer or vendor in that. So we did receive the majority of our first half distributions on that. We look to get the final distributions in August or September of this year. But there is a host of purchase orders for me to read tonight. The fire department, they're in the process of their promotional candidacy for lieutenants in that. And I hope to be able to bring the lieutenants to the Board of Trustees sometime in the next several months. That really is a response to the News Station 53 on Beechwood Road in that we really need to make sure that we staff that with supervisors at all times so that we're gonna promote the firefighters from within to that rank. Another thing that that does is, again, that's a very good process for us to have that, you know, team building within the organization that gives the promotional opportunities for our staff people to continue to mature in place with our organization. And, you know, talking about the firehouse, that, if you go by Beechwood Road, that's really coming along very well. You can see the walls are up, the frame is up, they're, you know, the wall, I'm sorry, the actual walls of the firehouse are up. The retaining wall in the back is, I'm not, you know, encouraging anyone to go back there and look at it, but it's impressive on that. And they really have engineered that site so that we can use the majority of that site to its maximum capability, and that's coming along very well. And that concludes my report.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
No, I have none. Thank you very much, Mr. Geis. If you find your voice.
Thank you, Mr. Geis.
Thank you. No public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to old business. Gentlemen, is there any old business that we might have missed?
I have none, sir.
No, trustee McGraw.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business, then. And our first item tonight is approval of payments. We're being asked to make a motion to approve the payments as prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. If there's no objection, I'll ask for a motion to do so.
So moved, sir. Second?
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item is approval of our monthly financial report. This is also prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. Gentlemen, you've had the report. Is there any questions or comments, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next will be approval of purchase orders. These are purchase orders that exceed $10,000 as recommended by Mr. Ken Geis, our Township Administrator. Mr. Geis, could you first please read through the list?
Thank you. The first is to Duke Energy for the Civic Center Gas and Electric at $36,000. The next is to the Milford Board of Education. It's a TIF payment, $1,4,843.43. West Claremont Local Schools, TIF payment, $1,283,913.32. Great Oaks Joint Vocational, TIF payment, $22,046.33. Claremont Northeastern, TIF payment, $16,539.65. Redwood Living, that is a developer TIF agreement, $55,353.22. Clover Communities Union LLC, another TIF payment, $24,276.95. Trilogy Investors LLC, TIF payment, $22,654.63. The Villas at Waterford Glen LLC, TIF payment, $45,457.99. Echelon by 360 LLC, TIF payment, $49,538.76. The next purchase order is to Total Quality Logistics. It's for the Economic Development Incentive Agreement for their Phase II. A reimbursement to the JED, $20,391.99, and that's for the December 2020 baseline agreement. The next is to Total Quality Logistics LLC for their baseline agreement for January of 2021 at $13,852.99. The next is for the fire department, Design Fitness. It's for the fitness equipment at Station 53 at $26,000. Station 53 to Office Furniture LLC, $42,500. The next is for the police fuel usage for a month at $20,000 to Fleet Corps Technologies. And the last is for the police department, and it's a new cruiser setup for the new cruisers that came in, four of them, at $34,200.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Geis regarding these?
I have none, sir.
No, not at this time.
I'll ask for a motion then to approve the purchase orders as presented by Mr. Geis, our Township Administrator.
So moved, sir. Second?
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is appointment of a JED 1, Ivy, it's the Ivy Point JED Board Membership. This is one of our board members. We're being asked to appoint a representative to the Union Township City of Milford JED District 1 to serve a four-year term, expiring June 27th, 2025, pursuant to the executed JED agreement. We have a recommendation to nominate Mr. McGee. First, I'm saying, McGee, are you interested?
Yes, sir.
Be happy to.
I'll second that.
I'll make a, go ahead.
Make a motion, go ahead.
Then, Mr. McGee, I'll make a motion to appoint you as a Township member to the JED 1 Ivy Point JED Board.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have a JED appointment to JED 3, which is the 516 Old State Route 74 JED, being asked to appoint a representative to the Union Township City of Milford JED District 3 to serve a four-year term expiring April 24th, 2025, pursuant to the executed JED agreement. This is a worker member to, that we are being asked to appoint. We have a nomination of Pastor Robert Cox as the worker member. Is there a discussion, or is there a motion to go ahead and approve this Pastor Robert Cox?
Motion to approve Pastor Roger Cox. Second?
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is the JED 6. It's the Glen SD Campus JED Board Membership. We're being asked to appoint several members. We'll do them individually, but tonight would be a Township member, a business member, and a worker member. This would be for the Union Township City of Milford JED District 6. These will serve various terms, which we'll say when we talk about them, pursuant to the executed JED agreement. So the first one would be a Township member. I think Mr. McGee has served before. Mr. Logue, do you have any desire to serve on the JED? Mr. McGee's done it before because he's available during the daytime to make the meetings and stuff. So I don't know. I didn't want to pass you up if you had any desires.
I appreciate it. I'll, but if Mr. McGee is interested in the reappointment...
I'd be happy to be honored.
Be honored to represent the Board.
Okay.
I'll move to nominate trustee McGee for appointment to the JED 3, I'm sorry, JED 6, Glen SD Campus JED.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll second that, and that's for a four-year term.
Roll call, Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is a three-year appointment for a business member. We have a nominee of... We have a nominee of Emily Abner from Provision Living. Is there a discussion or any objection? If not, I'll ask for a motion to appoint Emily Abner to, as the business member.
I have no discussion, and I'd like to make a motion to approve Emily Abner for the business member for three years, five to five nine twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. McGraw.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Finally, we need to appoint a worker member. We've got a nominee of Jennifer Messer of Provision Living. If there's no discussion or objection, I'll ask for a motion to appoint Jennifer Messer as the worker member to the JED.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. McGraw.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that is for a four-year term.
Yes, I'm sorry, four-year term, but five nine twenty-five.
Okay. So thanks, that takes care of our JED business, I believe, for those appointments. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item is the OKI Intermodal Coordinating Committee. Let's see here. We're being asked to reconfirm Corey Wright as the appropriate, the appointee for the OKI Intermodal Coordinating Committee membership for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and also reconfirm Robert McGee as the alternate designated. Mr. McGee, are you still willing to be the alternate?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Wright, are you still okay and ready to be the appointee?
Ready, ready to serve, sir.
Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to reconfirm Corey Wright as the appointee for the OKI Intermodal Coordinating Committee, and also reconfirm trustee Robert McGee as the alternate designated.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. McGraw.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. OKI, it's very important to have good representation down there so that our projects are mentioned and discussed at those meetings and...
They're all doing meetings now. Hopefully, later on this year, we'll get back to face-to-face. It'd be great.
Yeah, hopefully they can.
Forward to it in September, I believe. Director said in September.
Great. All right, now we have a resolution tonight. We have a Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash ten. Gentlemen, this is a nuisance structure abatement resolution, being asked to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash ten, which will authorize the abatement and removal of a nuisance structure pursuant to Section five zero five point eight six of the Ohio Revised Code at the following property, four zero eight six Glen Estee Withenville Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four five. Gentlemen, there's a quite extensive packet of information I didn't buy, and I've personally been able to see, you can see from the road without even going on the property, the condition of the building.
Terrible.
Yeah, and you can see from the pictures, there's quite a bit of danger thereof, looks like to me. So is there any discussion regarding this?
Say it again, I've said it a thousand times. I don't understand why people invest in piece of property and will not take care of it. This befuddles me, just can't understand.
It's a shame to see a nice piece of property. I guess with a barn at one time.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion then to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash ten, a nuisance structure abatement resolution for four zero eight six Glen Estee Withenville Road.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. McGraw.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks again to our zoning department for the extensive investigation and also providing us with clear information there. I appreciate that. Okay, so that concludes our regular business on the agenda, but I'll open the floor now for comments from our board members. Gentlemen, do you have anything you would like to mention tonight?
Yes, sir. Just happy to get the mask off. Thank you for the notification today and the media, and hopefully we'll get back to normalcy sometime here in June, all over the township and throughout the state. Look forward to it. It feels good not to wear that thing.
Thank you. Mr. Logue, anything tonight?
Yeah, just briefly, again, second what trustee McGee stated there as far as that goes, you know, everyone's somewhat, or if you're not aware of the news, with Governor DeWine yesterday issuing the guidance on rolling back all mandates for the general public starting June second, and then earlier today, CDC gave the guidance, and masks and social distancing for those vaccinated. That does conflict with the current timeline from Governor DeWine, but I believe common sense and personal responsibility will prevail during the next two weeks for those timelines. So just, I'd say to the community, please note that businesses locally and nationwide, they may have their own rules within their businesses, similar to dress codes at different businesses and locations. You know, we want to get the economy open and strong, so respect what they need to do for their businesses, because I know that's something that jurisdictions, CCPH, et cetera, will not be able to enforce, and they're not going to be a part of business decisions, that that is purely the discretion of the business. So, and CCPH, they are vaccinating right now over RJ Cinemas, so anyone that is interested, they do have several walk-in clinics, and you can visit ccphohio.org, or call their number, five one three seven three two seven four nine nine, for more information on how to obtain a vaccine if you are so inclined or interested. In addition to that, we have the local news, Riverbend and other local venues are opening to full capacity, and again, common sense and personal responsibility for what makes sense for you and your family is what's going to help us move forward. Now, I also did see today that Attorney General Dave Yost put a proposal forward to Governor DeWine to utilize the American Rescue Plan federal money to provide premium pay of a thousand dollar to police and law enforcement as a bonus for serving during COVID. The details to that are just still to come, if it is supported, and he also indicated that state funds could cover all first responders so that it's not, I don't, I don't know the discretion there, what they're looking at on that opinion, but that's something that's at least a sentiment that has been put out from Attorney General Yost to Governor DeWine to act on. So bottom line with that is just a big thank you to the police and first responders, safety services, for the efforts that your men and women have had to take on during the last year. So Chief Tommy, Chief Cavilla, pass that along as well, and Mr. Taylor, it does not go unnoticed, you know, the efforts that Service Department has had, so thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Logue.
Thank you.
A lot of good information there, appreciate it. I got a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, congratulations to our fiscal officer and his department and all of our administration. A couple of clean audits came back from the state, so congratulations, Mr. Campbell. One was for these, one, actually both ones were special improvement district, and one is for the East Sid, I believe, and it's good to see, good job by our fiscal staff to, and our administration, have clean audits, I'm happy to see that, so thank you. Also wanted to...
Thank you to Mr. Wright and Cindy.
Okay.
Doing an outstanding job.
Excellent. It's a lot of work, I know, so appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Did want to mention, with some of the switch around, Teal Town Road is now open, that looks great, and traffic's a lot better, but Old Seventy-Four, of course, is closed from about First Baptist Church down to Schoolhouse Road, so unless your local traffic needs to get in and out there, it's not open to through traffic. But it's, good thing is that the road's being done, and it's quite a project, so it'd be nice to see that when it all gets finished. Also wanted to mention, just real quick, Mr. Geis, you had mentioned the project on Round Bottom Road with the gas lines and that going, and we've had great cooperation with the local railroad, too, the CCET lines, and because of our support from the board and also some great local business people, we've got a couple of projects down there that are utilizing the rail. The rail had virtually gone away, where what, I think the tracks, I'm pretty sure, were rusted out at one point. You could tell that there was no activity on them, and now they're busy every day. Even BZAC is now using the rail service for some of their supplies. But the rail's also being extended to the new Parina Plant out in Williamsburg, so they're going to see even more activity as time goes by. So it's just good to see a cooperation of the township and a really good resource of the rail. It's been there a long, long time, and to see it really thriving now and coming back. I know they've been real cooperative with the township as far as getting our project done, too, so just wanted to mention that. So not everybody thinks of Union Township having a railroad, but there is one. So we do have some upcoming events, I'll read those in a minute, but first, if there's no further comments from the board.
I think it's fine, sir.
I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the board with a comment? Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Chris Hicks from four 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 Woodward Court, Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two five five.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, sir. Just as a comment to the thousand-dollar Dave Yost proposal for law enforcement, I think in, unfortunately, as a conservative, I feel like we've, I love law enforcement, especially when my wife lights the house on fire, but I think we've gotten to the point as a country where we should all be very concerned that we literally are printing so much money, we don't know what to do with it. We're going to hand it out to, we love police, but we're just going to hand out a thousand dollars to people, we're going to pay people not to work, we're going to have lotto's for kids going to college. This is all going to come back to haunt us, and we shouldn't be acting like these are good things. We shouldn't be talking like they're good things. Okay, there are problems that my kid's going to have to inherit, your kid's going to have to inherit when we become Venezuela someday, and I've been in Venezuela. Okay? So what I came here to talk about, though, is that I think a lot of people know that I pride myself on going after illegal and unethical activity in our county, and I put my time, my talent, and my treasure into those activities. I stand behind all of those activities that I've been involved with, and I'm sure many people know that has involved pretty much everything, litigation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. A lot of people who are also know that I was recently accused, quite ferociously, by a person in this community of looking the other way at illegal and unethical activity involving this government, that I was looking the other way. That person uniquely said, Mr. Logue, that you were not involved in that illegal activity. I asked you on April twenty-eighth, I asked you on May fourth, and I asked you on May fifth to please tell me, since you're not involved, but apparently I'm looking the other way at illegal activity in our township, what is that illegal activity that I am looking the other way at? Would you care at this time to either respond to that question that I've asked you at least three times already, or tell me that there isn't any, or commit to meeting me, with me separately, to tell me privately what's that illegal activity?
Mr. Hicks, thank you for your question. I appreciate it. From the reach-out and messages on a political agenda, I feel that engaging...
I'm asking specifically illegal government activity.
Illegal government activity. ...politically charged agenda, in my opinion, is not the best way for me to serve the public. And so watching and seeing that unfold between you and maybe another individual, I will leave that for you and that other individual to engage on.
Are you willing to state tonight that you personally are unaware of any illegal or unethical activity going on in this government? Will you say that on the record here tonight, so that these, those other people that you don't want to get involved with that are making those insinuations, know that you are on the record as a trustee in this township to say that, after I think, you know, a year, over a year that you've been in office, that you are unaware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government on the record right now, tonight?
Any un...
Illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government.
Taking place in this government.
Are you willing to state on the record tonight that you are unaware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government tonight, right now?
I have stated that on the record when we put forward for the audits. I've stated that on the record, as will be coming up from Mr. Baston here in a week or so, of a compliance report that each...
I'm not talking about this audit.
So I am not aware of any illegal or unethical activity going on within the township. I will act on that. It is in my interest, serving the people as a servant leader, to act on that.
Okay.
If you see something, you have to have an understanding of it.
I want to also, I thank you for saying that, on the record, that you're not aware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government. If you become aware of an activity, I want you to tell me, if you're not afraid to report it to somebody else. If there's anybody else here that's unaware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government, tell me. I'll be glad to make sure that I'm not giving a pass to any illegal or unethical activity. If anybody in the audience is aware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place within this government, they can come to me. I resent the insinuation that I am giving a pass to something illegal. I think people that know me in this room know that, I think they all think that if I were aware of illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government, I'd be the first person to pursue it. But I really appreciate that now you've stated on the record in a public meeting that you are unaware of any illegal or unethical activity taking place in this government. So I thank you guys for giving me the chance to speak, and on a final note, I also want to thank you and compliment you on what I think is one of the best, most transparent governments in this county. A government that never shut down its meetings, never locked its citizens out, is always trying to provide better services, and is an innovator that, for ten cents on the dollars, provided jobs compared to what any other government in this county can do, and not just low-end jobs, good jobs, like I drive past TQL every time I come to this meeting. So I want to thank you guys for that, and I want to compliment you, and just, you know, I'm upset, because I, first, I don't give a pass to anybody. Go ask my wife, go ask my kid, but I resent that there are people out there that, for their own egos, their own gain, or for gains of political allies of theirs, would let insinuation happen, that there is illegal or unethical activity, and you really need to clean that up, because you came into office sending out mailers that showed a ex-trustee with bags of money coming off of him, that said, "Stop backroom deals." So I'm glad that you took a first step tonight in making clear that in over a year, in this government yourself, you're not aware of any illegal or unethical activity. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. The floor is still open for the public to comment. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to comment? Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate people who attend our meetings in person, but we love our people who also watch our live broadcast on YouTube. We also put recordings of the meetings on Facebook, on our website, and also UTTV, so that there's plenty of places, if you can't catch the meeting in real time, you can watch it on your own time or re-watch it if you've missed something, not really sure about it. And I want to thank Mr. Logue and Mr. McGee, these guys both work hard to be as transparent as possible. Mr. Logue, you, I know you pushed the open checkbook a lot when you came into office, and Mr. Geis reported tonight that it's fully up to date and accurate, whereas many other communities also say they're on open checkbook, and they are, but they can go two years without reporting information, so kind of defeats the purpose. So Mr. Campbell does a great job of transferring that information to the open checkbook to make sure it's up to date, but those are the kind of things that, you know, we can always improve on and get better at, and I appreciate what we try to do. We've tried to improve communication as much as we can, so...
Trustee McGraw, thank you for acknowledging the effort to push Ohio check, open checkbook, and get the township on that, to be able to provide that transparency to the community. So thank you, appreciate that, and I appreciate your valuable opinions, and as far as, again, any insinuation, I'm not engaged in a tit-for-tat politically charged agenda, I'm here to serve the people of Union Township. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
On the matter of the checkbook, we have two, two fine people working in that office, our fiscal office is probably the smallest in this area, southwestern Ohio, especially with fifty thousand residents, we have a... We have a fiscal officer and one person, one person in that office with him, and they do all this work for the thousands of dollars business we do a year, thousands and thousands of dollars. And I thank you so much for that, uh, Mr. Campbell, for you and, and Mr. Cindy for doing all the things. I can't, can't imagine all the work she goes through every day, you and her, for, to take care of the fiscal needs of our township. And you're not giving enough thanks from this group. I appreciate all you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I echo with that, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Okay. So we do have some, uh, important, uh, announcements here and upcoming events. Just a reminder, our post office continues to be open for business during normal hours, and, uh, they can get quite busy, especially on a weekend, so if you've got packages to mail, a lot of that's going on right now, um, please come on in. Our Civic Center offices are open to the public for zoning permits and general information. Uh, the Queen City Room is open for limited reservations for government and nonprofits. Uh, see our website for details. It looks like, you know, perhaps in June, we can, uh, relax those restrictions more, um, as the restrictions are taken off of us from the state of Ohio. Also remind our township administration, offices will be closed on Monday, May 31st. This is an observance of Memorial Day. As a father of an active soldier and sitting in between two gentlemen who have served our country, I know Memorial Day is for those who have fallen, and I know you gentlemen know people who have fallen, and, uh, we appreciate the service of, of all the people who have served our country, but especially those who gave their lives, and maybe gave their lives many years later because of illness due to some of the activity that they were forced to be part of, like in Vietnam, like the Agent Orange and things like that. But, um, Mr. Logue, I don't know if you wanted to mention something about Lima Group, and, um, but Memorial Day is a special day for all our, our servicemen, and, and we appreciate those who have served and, and given their lives for our country.
Amen, brother. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Just, uh, time period reflect on those that have been lost and, and their families that have lost those loved ones to provide us what we have today. And it's in our interest to carry forward their mission. They're not privileged to live today, and we are, and we must strive to do our best, and that's not to be at the minimum or the bare standards, it's to exceed and go above and beyond. And that's what you give, and that's what you put in every single day.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, good news, uh, with, uh, we had already thought we could move forward with this, but it looks like it'll be, uh, just back to normal with our concert series. And, um, we're gonna kick things off, it looks like, with Model Behavior, very entertaining group, Saturday, June 5th, um, at 8:00 PM in the amphitheater. And also, uh, Three Day Rule will be here Saturday, June 12th, at 8:00 PM in the amphitheater. If you don't know what amphitheater is, it's right behind our offices, back here behind the Civic Center. If you've never been to a summer concert, please come out and, and give it a try, and they're a lot of fun. Uh, I know some of our audience members go pretty regularly, and, um, I think they would tell you that it's a, it's a great enjoyment to get a night out, doesn't cost you anything. You can come out and enjoy a nice concert and then go have dinner either before or after, and.
Bring a chair.
Bring a chair. Thank you. And so. So those are coming up, so that's good news. And, um, also, June 14th is Flag Day, and I'm gonna mention that because, uh, our Vietnam veterans do have a receptacle here in the office. If you have an old flag that's tattered and torn, bring it up here, we can accept it for you. They do a flag ceremony with the old flags and, um.
That's in the amphitheater also.
Is it? Okay.
It's gonna be done this year, too, 'cause, uh, Ken Williamson called and requested it, and, uh, it's gonna be done on a Sunday.
Prior to?
Prior to. Be brown flag, when, on the window.
Flag day's on a Monday.
Monday, so it'd be, it'd be prior to it, probably 13th.
So, if you haven't, look at your flag, if you fly your flag, I hope you do. Uh, if it's, if it's getting faded and tattered and torn, bring it up here, turn it in, get a new flag for Memorial Day, and, um, we'll be glad to accept. In the office, they have a receptacle, they can put the flag in and, and make sure it gets into the right hands and retired properly.
Uh, may I say something on that?
Yes.
Flag Day ceremony. Usually have the Boy Scout troops come up and take care of that Flag Day program, and they do such a marvelous job. These young men stripping a flag down and showing you what each state's, uh, thirteen colonies, telling the story about it. It's, it's really, uh, heartrending to come and watch these young men tell the story of the American flag. If you could have, that's Sunday afternoon, it's about one o'clock, I think, usually start, and, uh, they do a terrific job. Give these young men a nice hand for the work that they do.
That's all, sir, thank you.
Thank you. And if, if you've never noticed, they, they do attempt to save the stars and the flag, and then they hand us out as special mementos.
Yes, it is.
So. Okay. So before I ask for a, a motion to adjourn, is there any other comments, questions?
I have none, nothing else, thank you.
And I did want to mention, right after this meeting, we're gonna be, uh, holding two, uh, uh, other meetings, there are special improvement district annual meetings. Uh, this will be, uh, following our meeting here, first will be the Jungle Gyms, Special Improvement District, and then following that will be Terrace Ridge. So if you're so inclined, you can stay around and, and check that out. So if there's nothing else to, uh, comment on, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 7:54 PM.
Thank you for attending and watching our meeting, we appreciate it.